Okay, welcome to the March 19th Thursday Board of Ed Media. Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Here.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Here.
Philip Delmeyer?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Purnier?
Here.
Diane Bumbach?
Here.
All right, student flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, visitor's comments should be lifted to the agenda. Any comments? All righty, student representatives, please.
All right, first off, I'd just like to say hello.
Hi.
It's good to be back.
I missed you.
It was nice. Oh, thank you, I missed you too. First quick announcement would be that Mr. Steffler wanted me to tell you guys that he will be here. He will be arriving late because he's at the boys' basketball banquet tonight. But he should, he should be here soon. Uh, first of all, these past couple weeks, Reed Cross America Day took place at TBS and Jerome Harrison. And Ms. LaCroy from the high school and many high school students took place in these events, where the high schoolers came and read many Dr. Seuss books to the kids. And I was at Jerome Harrison and Sochukka Valley for both. And Jerome Harrison was very fun, they decorated the whole school, the kids get really into it. And it's kind of a really good way to, you know, get like the little kids involved and the high schoolers too. And at the community service day, we were able to do it. Uh, sports update, always my favorite. Girls hockey won their second SCC tournament over hand and participated in the first round of the CIAC state tournament. Boys and girls basketball qualified for the CIAC state tournament and the boys went on to compete in the second round. Boys ice hockey qualified for the SCC tournament and then moved on to the CIAC state tournament, where they then ended up moving on to the finals, which will take place tomorrow night at 7:30 at Yale's ice rink. And that is actually a very big accomplishment. And I know tomorrow, we have a school spirit type of day where we're all wearing purple and it's a blackout for the game. A lot of high schoolers are really getting into it and it's definitely a big accomplishment for the ice hockey boys. And the annual NVHS blood drive is taking place tomorrow at the high school. And this is a great way to kind of save lives, give back to the community. Any high school students who make age height and weight requirements can donate blood and give back to the community.
Thank you. Hello.
Um, there was one thing that we'd like to bring up. For the first time, a junior clarinist at MBHS, specifically Courtney McNellis, was selected as the 2015 UConn first chaired high school honor band member. And on February 21st, she actually attended a full day event at the Storrs campus in which she got to practice with the ringed ensemble and they got to play a public performance at 5:00 PM that evening. Now scheduled for March 26th is the MBHS National Honor Society Annual Senior Citizen Luncheon, in which the senior citizens get to come in and enjoy a lunch, chat with the members of the National Honor Society, and enjoy some music that the MBHS Music Department presents. And finally, upcoming is the annual MBHS Drama Club Spring Production of The Addams Family, which is currently scheduled for 7:00 PM on March 27th and 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM on March 28th. We know that the director Cindy Jendana has been working very, very hard with all the cast since the onset of the year to prepare for this public performance. And on top of that, Mr. Donanzio's classes have constructed and designed the sets for the play. And Ms. McGinnity and Ms. Cavett's art classes have painted the backdrops for it. And I know that it will be a spectacular performance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave.
When do tickets go on sale for that, do you know?
I'm pretty sure it's next week.
Okay.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks guys.
Nice job, well, thank you. All right, we move on to approved minutes. February 15, 2015, Budget Workshop.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 15, 2015 Budget Workshop and that's submitted.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Upstate.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 12, 2015 Board of Education meeting is submitted.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah, Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
All right, personnel, designation by this time. Appointments. Yes, I've received recommendations from North Grandford High School, administration of following spring coaching positions for the head girls softball coach Nick Felizio, for the co-head coach for the boys tennis team, Joe Parisi and Dwight Boltman, and the high school golf team, Chris Watson. The top three, names that I've just read, are our graduates of North Grandford High School. Nick Felizio is currently a communications teacher at the high school. And Joe Parisi is a student enrolled at Quinnipiac University. And Dwight, also a student, Boltman is a graduate of the Polytech Institute. He is working in Sochukka Valley as a young professional right now. So it's great to see our graduates come back to the district and work with our youngsters as role models and coaches. And for two of these young men to be employees in the school district and as the superintendent, it must be a great deal of pride, knowing that they valued their experiences here and have come back. And I'm mentioning this to you, we have many North Grandford graduates who are currently working with us. And I think it's wonderful. So without further ado, I'm very pleased with these recommendations.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the above recommended North Grandford High School spring coaches as submitted, to be paid in accordance with the agreement between the North Grandford Board of Education and the North Grandford Federation of Teachers.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
So I don't have this question, but it's coaches. Why are we only approving these?
These are the spring coaches for the seasons that are just starting. They were, we had a resignation for softball, two resignations for tennis, and also for the golf, golfing.
Okay, so we're just approving new positions?
New positions.
Okay. I mean, they're not new.
He was an assistant.
That's what they created, isn't it, huh?
Nick Felizio was an assistant coach prior.
Thank you.
I also want to mention that Mr. Coach Parisi and Coach Boltman started sheltering the tennis court with the team. They've been out there for several days, unfortunately. It's great to be in the building.
Sure.
Exercise.
And Julie Brown, roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
Colby just pointed something out to me, I didn't read the attendance, the minutes. And going back to the budget workshop, I wasn't absent that night. I was, I was late, I came in, I came in, I'm late that night. I came in 10 minutes late. Which one, Marcy? Um, the budget workshop, February 15th. I was like 10 minutes late to that one.
That goes as far as talking to you.
Oh, it is on page two?
Yeah, it says you arrived at 7:00.
Gotcha. You know what, Marcy, if I can explain, if you're not there, roll call goes, I try to do it in bold, which was requested. So it, is it in bold? Okay, so I was absent because I wasn't there at roll call. Gotcha, okay, perfect, thank you. You're welcome, thanks for the clarification.
All right, please, none at this time, super tennis report. Uh, thank you. And donations, well, I received a phone call at North Grandford Elementary School from a Ms. Danielle Pierpont, who would like to donate a piano, an upright World's Tour piano that is in excellent shape. She had it valued at $2,500. We currently have a piano in the music room that is dated and needs quite a bit of work. So if this would satisfy that need, we would look at the cost of transporting. Our only cost would be to transport through a professional company to move the piano, which we estimated $300 to $400. So for $300, we get a beautiful piano.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the donation of an upright World's Tour piano valued at $2,500 from Ms. Danielle Pierpont with grateful appreciation.
I'll second that.
Sorry, Phil.
Got you this time, Phil.
Any discussion? It's a coke. Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the communications piece of the board briefs, you have the administrative reports. As I mentioned, there's quite a bit going on, it continues. There's just one highlight I'd like to mention, the St. Walbert's event that raised $25,000. Thirty, thirty, $30,000. It was a combined effort of all the schools collectively with their buildings and staff and the community. They really had an exceptional turnout. Well, for Lila was one of the co-sponsors and Lila was there that night. And I want to thank Mr. O'Rourke and Dr. Wells for taking part in having their head shaved as part of the fundraiser. I know the kids were really excited about that. I think yours was done from the entire sixth grade.
Yeah.
Correct.
Have I heard various students?
And who's your intern?
Lila.
Lila Shae.
Another student, yep.
So just, no, he's gonna make me cry. Anyway, good stuff, great effort. Okay, uh, field trips. Unless there are any questions, go ahead.
Can we go?
Yeah, this is, we have a special bus just for the working person.
This is obviously one you might vote on, but it's nice that you were informed. The New York City trip, March 30th. Students from the Italian class will go to experience cuisine products and culture in the taste of Italy. So if you'd like to go and chaperone, you can reach out to the language department. And as I mentioned, it's not required, it's not an open night trip. Questions? How many kids are going to run this trip? Mr. Wels, I'm not going to put you on the spot, you've been pulling down this for three weeks. I can't answer that. I can find out for you if it's the entire group that are enrolled in the Italian language classes that we probably get a good number of students. But I'll, I'll find out for you, I'll send you an email. Budget request. The 15 budget requests were submitted to the town manager and council on Wednesday, February 25th. Board attended workshop requested by the town council on Saturday, March 7, 2015. I'd like to thank Don for presenting that Saturday. On that Saturday, we presented a status quo budget and then the approved budget to look comparatively at the difference between the three positions that we were looking to add in the budget that you approved. In the second meeting, we just presented the approved budget by the Board of Education. So I, I want to thank those who were able to come out and support us that day in presenting. I think it really showed the united front with you all sitting at the table while we presented and talked about the budget that, that you voted in favor for, that you accepted. So I want to thank you publicly for being there. The dates are listed as the 7th, 8th, 9th, and if need be, the 14th, 7 o'clock, the public hearing. The Wednesday is the deliberations at town hall, same with the 9th, and if we do, the 14th.
Scott, just to be clear, April 7th is the only meeting where there's public comment?
Correct, correct. And I'm assuming that will be in the auditorium or cafeteria. And lately, it's been in the NVHS CAF, but so. So we'll hear and we'll get the word out to where it's going to be.
I just want to let Blue know that on the 8th, they have project negotiations going on, so.
I may be late if I'm running.
That late, I would have some luck.
Last year though, the council let us know that, I think we were the second night and they told us we didn't have to come at all for that first night of deliberations because they weren't going to get to us.
Well, I mean, and the only reason that I know is because I booked it today, so that's why I just did it.
Yeah, you might not, you might not have to go one of those nights, so.
So we'll get the communication from town hall before. Any questions on the dates? The SCASS student award luncheon, I was so fortunate to accompany administrators from three buildings, through Cascade and hand them, we had six students. They were honored that day, they were selected by our building administrators, recommended by their teachers. And it was, it was a wonderful day, it was a venue at Cascade. And we have 18 districts in our SCASS group. And it's just, it's a fun day to see our students being recognized and have our administrators there, parents there, some of our shining stars and future shining stars. So the following students were selected from Sochukka Valley, Braden Lovato, Tate Barbarata from NVHS, Jesse Gilmore and Jason Ash, and from the high school, Olivia Gleason and Jay LeVani. So I want to thank administrative team for being there and support and for our teachers who recommended.
That's very nice.
Drama club, I think the student reps mentioned that The Addams Family will be presented on the 27th and 28th at the North Grandford Auditorium. Times are listed there. The Addams Family musical has music and dance. It should be a fun night, I'm sure, it's a little different. I can't say that I've seen The Addams Family, but now I guess I'm, it's a peak when you're just at it. So please come out and enjoy the show. We'll have tickets for you, you can get here at central office or at the school. We will put an email out and everything's listed below. Summer camp, we have announced that it's going to be ocean commotion, which will be interesting. It's going to be held at Jerome Harrison School because of the work being done in Sochukka Valley. You are aware that we have a really big request during the summer months. We're trying to do a lot of work on the interior building as well. It's interesting to walk through Sochukka at this time with the snow, the freezing and the melting, and the bucket brigade moving constantly. So this is long overdue and, you know, we're excited to get that piece completed and behind us and start to do some interior renovations.
So all the professional offices will be moved from there to one of the other schools?
Yes. If, if there's work going on that we feel is going to interrupt, you know, how they function right there, we'll move that to, similar to what we did at the high school. We haven't had that conversation yet, but we, we'll let Dr. Peterson know at least. Thanks for that, John. You could spend some.
You didn't show us the boxes in the package.
I didn't notice. As we mentioned before, Corinne Berry, I think, Mary Savino run the camp there, are co-camp directors. They do a wonderful job. We have a great deal of support from Hon, Donadio, Pierre, Kivinbi, who have received paperwork and a lot of the behind the scenes work with enrollment and payment and working online. It's a great team effort, the kids love the camp. And I continue to get letters, I mean, I probably got three letters in the last three weeks from junior counselors or kids who want to be junior counselors that have gone to camp since they were in first or second grade, they're just going to high school. And they just, they want to be around them. And the majority of our camp workers are graduates and many of our employees actually work as camp staff as well. So it's a, it's a great, it's a great program for our kids. And that's it. Thanks, Scott. Committee reports, negotiations?
I had actually hoped to have one contract to present today, but we won't need to go into executive session because the unit has not yet met the draft plan, so that will be an equal. And I've got, still a couple ongoing and we'll be starting with parent professionals this one.
Okay, thank you.
So never a normal.
Budget operations?
The, the, we, we had a meeting and discussed the budget for the current year. Obviously, had a lot of things we've talked about recently about the budget for '15, '16, so we didn't really go into that. But there's nothing really significant in the budget for '14, '15 that we need to be concerned about.
Thank you. Curriculum, we don't have it tonight. Attention, committee, policies, meeting, aces.
I cannot go to the March meeting. I had the wrong date on my calendar, it was a day late.
Your lunch is probably cold. Your lunch is probably cold.
Yeah.
Goldie committee?
Okay, um, you only, it was, it was actually short and pointless this, this month. But it's, uh, what they said was that the inspection went to bid by like next week, March 23rd, and they should have bid reviewed by the 13th of April. Um, I think they're pushed out like one or two extra weeks from what they had originally said, but it's still more in better shape than, than the first dates. And then Rose Angeloni had asked Michelle for the amount of money that were left over from the MBHS roof and said, so that they know what's going, you know, what they can apply towards TV. So it was just an information. So that was it really, for the most part. We are, they finished paying the high school contractor, general contractor, and what's that one?
Shut the job's room.
Oh, um, and that's about it. Diane, did you figure that?
No, the big thing was that, that they were pushed out about two weeks then.
Which is not terrible.
For completion date at the time?
Well, they really had no bearing on, on the completion date, the start date.
Right.
They have bid process.
The bid process, which then pushes out the start. So they didn't, they didn't really say anything about that.
I heard you guys are doing a great job, by the way. I've heard a couple people say you represent as well.
Oh, good.
So good. What's better than the two prior? It was me. No, but seriously, I heard, good stuff, you're doing a good job, seriously. Communications?
So we discussed, we met last week, if I remember correctly. Um, we discussed the signage out front. So there were some drafts of what the town had selected. And basically, it's going to be a little bit clearer, the sign in front has arrows. And we really liked the design.
The sign was really nice.
It was. And then, I'm not sure if they settled on that second sign, maybe. But it's a nice banner.
Well, they were going to have a big sign out by the road.
Right.
And then they were going to have another smaller sign inside pointing to Sochukka Valley because I guess deliveries keep going to the wrong buildings.
Right, right area, right? Yes, they talked about it that, because the building committee was, any of them, we leave when the, the school projects are over, we leave. But we, they had already started talking about it, that's what they said.
And deliveries don't go in the wrong buildings.
Yeah.
It's this way, it's a little bit more clear with the addresses and whatnot, so.
Right.
But they, but they showed a couple of them, and that one that they were going to go with, they just had to put it out to bid to a couple other people.
Right.
But it was really a nice sign.
It was a nice sign. Um, we have stuff on time with that. And then the other projects at the back end and the science labs. And then, um, oh, there was a request to use this room for parking wreck. Is it strictly for parking wreck or just pound?
A combination, but we, we probably have a group of ladies that can in, so we can use the facility. The parking wreck one was expanded this year as well. So we, we did not have a problem with that. We were going to look at, you know, doing some updating in this room and making sure that we have a calendar and that we sent to the calendars, clear communication with our staff and the parking wreck, so that it's not overlapped.
Right, exactly, then, contact information and have a sec of the room.
All right, good, thank you. Calendar.
The calendar committee met, it was myself, Marcy, Todd Steffler, and Megan Peterson, representing the teachers union. The calendar has actually gotten somewhat easier because of the new regional calendar initiative. And the calendar that you have before you actually mimics that regional, regional calendar. So it, it starts school for teachers on the 24th, for students on the 27th of August. Has basically the holidays we had traditionally separate, celebrate. The 26th of August is one of the ones, it's a regional professional development day. And Election Day is also a regional professional development day. And we also have professional development day on Election Monday. In this case, the, as you know, the December break is usually pretty straightforward. It's proposed only two days for February. And a profession, not, an early dismissal on March 16th, similar to the one you approved for this year for professional development. And Good Friday, April break is the same as the original calendar, the 18th through the 22nd. And the calendar with no snow days gets us out on June 9th. Any snow days would be added to, all of the snow days would be added to June using this format.
So we wouldn't take away the Tuesday, like, short February, ever?
Oh, sorry.
Stop, good.
So any of the regional birthday dates, were there any conflicts with the teachers or?
No, no, everything was, and that actually, I mean, there is an estate clause in it that allows you five flexible days, so, I mean, there are things that we could move if we needed to. But this, this actually conformed rather well with our, with our mantra. And then the other thing that we discussed briefly that I just wanted to raise and we don't need a decision right now is because we are now really kind of being given the calendar as opposed to having to develop the calendar. My thought was perhaps we should just make the calendar committee an administrative committee that seeks input from the teachers and the administrators and then simply make a recommendation to the board rather than having a calendar committee of the board. It makes it a little bit easier for us to schedule meetings and do those kinds of things. And as I said, with the regional calendar, there really aren't that many decisions to be made anymore. You know, Marcy, remember going back to the old days, it was start before Labor Day, after Labor Day, it was, you know, February break and, you know, when to place April break. And there were many more variables than there really are now.
And I've been on the calendar committee for 10 years now, 10 calendar seasons now. And I'm, I'm in total agree with Don asking how I felt about that. And I said, yeah, I only think they need a board representative, and why the calendar's pretty much set.
It's set.
And then, you know, we're very forward to the board for approval.
Then obviously, we would make sure we got it to you in time just before the board meeting. So if you had any questions or needed to have any discussion, you know, you'd have time to do that. We were obviously delayed waiting for dates with aces. We did, and we went back and forth, back and forth. And we have X amount of districts vying for an agreement on particular days with some holidays that are celebrated and some that aren't. They've got kicked back and dropped in a number of times. And this is the latest feedback with the calendar, so, you know, our apologies, but we were, we were being handicapped. The aces draft for '16, '17 is already out. I don't know whether, you know, that's, I don't know how subject to change it is, but we at least have that as a, you know, as a template at this moment. Next year's.
You don't have a choice, except for your primary.
'16, '17, that's correct. '16, '17, it becomes mandatory with, except for the, you know, five floating days or whatever.
It would be nice if they, they finalized that so that, you know, districts can finalize it too and people can plan around that. Because I don't like doing it this late, you know?
So some of the districts could take additional holidays? Let's say like in the region where they have an extra five or six days.
There are several, I forget exactly the term they use.
Like a week row?
They are discretionary holidays. And I'm not, I never think that's, that's the name of it. So there, and there are, there are a couple of, I think there's four on the list. There's Columbus Day, Veterans Day, and two Jewish holidays. And you can either take them or go to school on them, that's entirely the choice of the district. We did what we have historically done, we took Columbus Day, we go to school on Veterans Day, which is something we started back when Don McCarthy was the superintendent. And, you know, doing some sort of recognition or celebration of that day. And then we've typically not taken the Jewish holiday, so those were four.
It's a long span of time between December and February, 15 weeks.
That four day weekend will really pay great attention to it.
I'm sure.
Well, of course, last year, we lost every day in February except.
I have a question, right?
Yeah, one, we had the one-day break.
Right.
So Don, with his calendar, is very clear about that. So parents can look at this, and they see we have applications that, as my understanding, all the snow days, every snow day we get will be tapped on from the night, so the first snow day is lead attempt. So when parents look at this and plan differentations or all that good stuff, nothing can be affected on this, no matter what, everything will be at night. Am I correct, right?
So that's a question I have, too. How many days can we have? Is it?
Fifteen. We can have. It can actually go all the way to the thirtieth. Fifteen snow days we can have, and maybe my last day, we have to go to the thirtieth.
The voice of, of winter.
I tell you, we had a sell-off for twenty-eight, a couple years ago.
We're late.
We went to the twenty-eight.
So we have fifteen days of personnel we can use to get us to the thirtieth. Or weather days, you know?
Weather.
I know. I mean, I know where, where I've been, been to the twenty, so everybody, everybody.
So a perfect, well, yeah, a nice.
Yeah. Well, for sure, it'll be nice. Well, if we had this calendar this year, we, you know, we had four snow days, one, two, three, it would be out of fifteen.
Thank you.
So then I'd like to make a motion to approve the North Ramper Public Schools, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school calendar I submitted.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dalmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes.
All right, we have no business. Go to the board.
I just want to say thank you, I'll go first, to the parents and staff members at Jerome Harrison, because, I mean, every year, they're doing Press America Day, I, it blows my mind the amount of work and volunteer hours, they, the donations, it's just amazing. I just wish that enthusiasm can continue out throughout the years, like, you know, into the older schools as well, and hopefully that's the case with this group of parents or that are just really involved and the bottom line side. It's just really fantastic, and they make the news.
And I'd like to wish the hockey team, you know, best of luck tomorrow or Saturday night, depending upon the weather. I think this is the first time the history.
First, first time.
They've been made it to the States, to the state finals, so that's terrific.
Can I, well, one, I'm talking about the hockey team division at North Ramper.
I, I was definitely, I, not only did the boys play wonderfully, but our fan section was tremendous. They represented North Ramper so nicely. They, they were supportive, they were, they were, they were there, they were a tight group, there was no disrespect, it, it just spoke volumes to how we, how we do business here.
I was fortunate enough to be at the press conference that had the hockey players in Selington, and the director of the hockey committee for CIAC came over and went to stop our players and coaches on the way out, and said, you know, firstly, you should be so proud, but your student section, your fan base was by far the best that we've seen throughout the tournament, for support, behavior, and energy, which meant a lot to the boys, and they, you know, acknowledge that, they're so thankful for the support they've gotten.
I stayed for the game after, so I was, you know, four sets of, of student groups, and, and they all had, had wonderful turnout and support of all the teams that played, but our, our, our kids definitely were the best.
You know what was nice to see was when that delay, there was a delay, and there were fans coming in for the next game, it was nice to see Branford cheering with our kids.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, they really wanted our kids to win, they really, you know, they wanted to win their game, and they really wanted to go head to head against them, and it was nice to see that, you know, the Branford fans were, you know, getting our fans to cheer with them, and it was, it was nice to see.
Yeah, the environment. All right, visitors and press. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Phil.
Yeah, I'm, no, I just, I just wanted to give a note. On the Saturday, March seventh budget meeting, I wanted to congratulate Don and Scott. They did a great presentation job. I mean, there were no questions, it was, it was well done, very well done. Thank you, Phil, thank you.
You were right on that, Phil.
Anything else?
No, I have to.
All right. Visitors and press.
We actually have some visitors this time. My name's Liz Haskins. My address is forty-three Indian Lane in Northford. I have two things I'd like to address to the board tonight. First thing I'd like to do is thank you for hiring Dr. Welch to be our principal at Jerome Harrison School. It's been a wonderful year, it's been an incredibly, you know, smooth transition. He's been so supportive all around for parents, kids. He's out there greeting the kids every morning, high-fiving them off the bus, he's taking the time to get to know all the kids. I'm on the PTO board there, he's more than supportive of our existing programs that we have there, as well as bringing new ideas to the table as far as fundraising, community events, and events within the school, so thank you very much. The other thing I'd like to address to you tonight is the decision to move the DARE program from fifth grade to sixth grade. I received an email back in mid-November that was forwarded to me from Dr. Lindsay, explaining that it was an amicable decision between Dr. Lindsay, Mr. Davis, Mr. Skoemaker, and the officer who's running the DARE program, that they would move it to sixth grade, it would be better implemented at that age level. When I first read it, I was a little upset because I think we're missing a window of opportunity at Tucutag Valley to educate these kids. DARE program does so much more than what I was in school, which is drug and alcohol awareness. They're doing internet safety, cyber bullying, bullying, you know, so many things that kids at this age level can really benefit from. I was having a look at the police commission minutes from January twelfth, and the DARE program came up, and I'd like to read a little bit from it. Officer Tim Cunningham stated that the past couple of years of DARE, the DARE program has been declining. The program went from four days a week to a class every other week. Last year, we was only able to fit in eight classes, which should have been ten classes, and this is a problem because kids can't roll over from lesson to lesson when we have weeks of last time. It goes on to say that at the middle school, we'll be able to run the program the way it's supposed to be ran, with ten back-to-back classes in which kids can absorb what was discussed the class prior and tie it into the next class discussion. Vice Chairman Colombo asked if he thinks it's too late in sixth grade, or bad decisions are already made, and Officer Cunningham replied that he cannot say yes or no, but if the program continues as it is, it's not even worth the program, and the last thing he wants to see is the DARE program fall back. So I was under the impression that it was a decision made that it would be better implemented at the sixth grade level. After reading this, it clearly sounds like there wasn't enough time allowed at Tucutag Valley for him to run the program successfully.
I, I can speak to that, and that's contradictory to what he wrote to us in his proposal to move it to sixth grade. So I, I will gladly follow up with that and have a conversation if you'd like to be present. I would invite you to.
I would love to, I just think we're missing a window of opportunity. I'm not ready by any means.
It was more of a scheduling conflict on his end, and he felt that it would be more appropriate for sixth grade students, and it worked out with Mr. Davis's new schedule and the wheel, that he could better accommodate that age group, but the start of that came from the police department.
I understand they started it, but it sounds contradictory when he's saying that it wasn't allowed at the right time to implement the program. So I would love to know what the, what the real reason is, because if we're moving it, I'm in no way saying that we don't need it at the middle school level. We absolutely do, but, you know, we know early intervention is the best way to go to this. You know, we've got sixth graders that have been get sold hot at the school, we've got fourth graders posting YouTube videos from classrooms. I mean, I don't think we need any more evidence that it's really needed at that school level. Something, you know, if not the DARE program, then something else really needs to be in that school. And I would even go so far as to say, you know, third and fourth graders could really benefit from it as well.
Thank you.
But I would love to hear.
Absolutely.
You know, what happened.
I'll reach out to them.
Thank you.
Any comments from visitors? All right.